Hello and welcome to this week's edition of The Advance with Kevin Roberts. We are covering something that all of us, whether we're in Texas or outside Texas, have been focused on, and that is the special sessions plural here in the state Capitol. Plural because there are some members, as our guests will discuss, who've decided it's more important to be in another Capitol, the nation's Capitol, than it is to be here in Austin doing their work. The reason for their absence, by the way, is a common sense election reform bill that is so radical that it would require voter identification for mail-in ballots. I know, it sounds really onerous. We're going to unpack that today, give you a forecast of what's going to happen over the next few weeks here in Austin. Even if you're tuning in from outside Texas, as I know most of you usually do, this is a really important topic because what's gone on here in Texas regarding legislative strategy is very much tied into a national strategy by the radical left to make sure that we don't have common sense election reform. So we'll get into that. We'll take your questions at the end if you came into today's episode with a burning question. You can go into the comments section of whatever channel you're watching this on and pose that now. We'll get to it shortly. But let me introduce the two guests we have this week. They also happen to be great friends and senior colleagues here at the foundation. Chuck DeVore, our vice president for national initiatives, and Rob Henneke, our general counsel. Both Chuck and Rob, I'm pleased to say, are vital to the work that we do here at the Texas Public Policy Foundation. They've also been extremely involved in the work that's gone on regarding the election reform bills this session, I should say, these sessions. So what we're going to do today is give you the proverbial 30,000-foot view briefly. We'll get into an update today. We're sort of watching our phones because we're expecting a quorum return any day, perhaps even any moment, although we've been saying that now for several days. But the headline that we will write is that if you have been frustrated, as the three of us have been, by what's going on in Texas or what hasn't been going on in Texas, eventually, whether next week or next month, we will have common sense election reform. And that's important for the rest of the country, as it is for those of us who vote here in Texas. So Chuck DeVore, I want to turn to you first. You've been real active, testifying many times already this calendar year in the legislature on this topic and others. Give our viewers a sense of where things stand today and what you're expecting over the next few days.
Well, thank you, Kevin. So where things stand today is that the Texas State Senate has introduced and passed its version of election integrity legislation, Senate Bill 1. Because the House has not been able to constitute a quorum this second session, as it didn't during the first session, special session, the House equivalent, House Bill 3, has been introduced, but hasn't been able to go anywhere because the House hasn't been able to constitute any business. And so if you look at Senate Bill 1, it's exactly the same as the Senate Bill 1 that passed in the first special session with an additional series of floor amendments, many of them by Democrats, to do technical amendments to the bill to improve certain items regarding the vote for disabled individuals, voter assistance, cure procedures for mail-in ballots, et cetera. And while the Democrats ended up voting against the bill when it passed out of the Senate, it is interesting to me to see that the Senate did accept and incorporate several Democratic amendments into their own version of this legislation.
So contrary to popular belief, this isn't a situation where Republican leadership of both chambers in the Texas Legislature used to listen to Democrats. It seems to be a situation where perhaps there's a political calculus that one side is making, that would be the side of the left when it comes to this issue.
I think you're correct on that. And I'd say the political calculus is twofold. First of all, there's the theater aspect, you know, the flying to Washington DC on a privately chartered, I think it was two jets with their cases of Miller beer and no masks, and of course subsequently spreading COVID to at least six different people. So the common joke that they went to Washington DC with a case of Miller and generated or came back with six cases of COVID. So there's that aspect, right? The public theater aspect. The practical aspect is that there are weaknesses in our election code that have traditionally seen or been manifest in certain areas in Texas, the Rio Grande Valley and portions of Houston and Dallas. And our research here at the foundation, research that I've been privileged to lead for the last few years, looked into these shortcomings, into these loopholes, mostly in mail-in balloting, and came to the conclusion that in the hard-fought 2018 Senate race between then Congressman Robert Francis O'Rourke and Senator Ted Cruz, that some of these exploits were in fact being used statewide. There was some evidence to suggest that some of the weaknesses in the mail-in ballot system were beginning to be seen on college campuses. And this concerned us very greatly, that loopholes that were used to win primarily Democratic primary contests, low-turnout primary contests or local elections, were beginning to be used statewide. And so Senate Bill 1 and its companion, House Bill 3, would seek to address these weaknesses and begin to prevent mail-in balloting from being used to fraudulently influence elections.
Yeah, so much so that we've seen other states pass similar legislation. I'll come back to that point with you, Chuck, in a moment, as well as come back to you on the point of how the political strategy of the Texas runaway Democrats is very much tied into some of the national legislation. I learned this morning that early next week, perhaps, the US House will once again take up some of the nefarious so-called election reform bills there. I'll come to you on that, but first want to turn to our friend and colleague, Rob Henneke, our general counsel. Rob, you've been a Texas county attorney, you worked in the Attorney General's office, you're our general counsel, helping Chuck and others work on this issue. You're looking at it not just from the standpoint of the legislation that will ultimately be passed, but also from the standpoint of litigation, a vital part of the toolbox for organizations like ours. What's your sense, once this legislation does get passed in the next few weeks, of what the litigation landscape will be defending these bills, what will eventually be our law?
Well, Kevin, it's terrific to be with you, to share the laptop screen with you and Chuck for this discussion. Really, I expect that we're going to see a continuation of the new front over the battle for election integrity flowing to the courthouses in Texas and the courthouses across the country. You'll recall that last year, over the summer during the beginning of the pandemic, the left attempted to misuse the pandemic and take advantage of that as a justification to go to court to sue to try to compel judges to order changes in state law that would then have caused there to be universal voting by mail for every person in Texas, which we know would have opened up our election process to be rife with fraud and completely destroyed the integrity of our elections here. Now thankfully, the partnership between the Texas Public Policy Foundation and the Texas Attorney General's Office was successful in defeating those cases in court so that the left was not allowed to rewrite election code via the judicial abuse, abuse of the judicial process. But that's become the playbook. You've seen that across the country, you've seen that in states, you've seen Democrat law firms that have received millions and millions of dollars from the left to bring these types of lawsuits. We've already seen that happening again here in Texas. The regular session, believe it or not, there was a number of great election reform bills that were passed, smaller, laser rifle shot type measures, not the big omnibus bill that still has to pass. Legislature did take action in certain ways, and already the left and these Democrat-funded law firms have filed suit here in Texas to try to strike down, but I think we could all agree, our very common sense update to the Texas state election code. For example, the two requirements at issue, number one involves not allowing individuals to claim as their residence a post office box. That's right, the little, you know, five-by-12 box that you could rent at a UPS store or a post office. People have been using and claiming that as their residence, to where it's been documented that you've had hundreds and hundreds of Texans allegedly have their residence to be at one of these PO boxes. So Senator Bettencourt passed last session a great reform that requires you to have to actually have a residence address when you register to vote. You can get your mail wherever you want, but when you register to vote, you have to point to the place where you live. So the left filed suit over that, claiming that it was unconstitutional. And here recently, I'm leading the team of Coalition of Counties, and we have intervened into that case to defend Texas state law. The way that the law was brought, the plaintiffs intentionally have tried to cut out the Texas Attorney General's Office from being able to defend that lawsuit. So we've recently joined through our Election Integrity Litigation Project to defend Texas state law. We're also planning on defending the state law requirement that you have to actually have an ink signature when you fill out your voter registration card. But that's just all of the precursor to what's to come, that we fully expect that when the Texas Legislature fully enacts its omnibus election reform bill, that the left's going to run to the courts and try to get activist judges to thwart the will of the people through the Texas Legislature by suing to change that state law. And the Texas Public Policy Foundation, the Texas Attorney General's Office, we're going to meet them at the courthouse, we're going to defend these cases, we're going to defeat these lawsuits, and we're going to make sure that the election integrity measures passed by the legislature remain law and remain in force for the upcoming election.
Right, so just to sum up, we're thinking about what Chuck said, we're going to get these bills passed this month or next month. There's a sort of hard deadline politically that we'll talk about with Chuck in a moment, which makes us very optimistic that we'll get this done by next month. And then even after that, even with millions of dollars being spent by the other side in trying to tear down these lawsuits, we know that we believe that we're going to prevail on those as well. So ultimately, starting next election cycle, our elections will be as secure as they've been a long time. Chuck, that then sort of creates the question, what's the end game here? Whether that's for the Texas Democrats, for their allies in Washington DC. So many people are just trying to figure out, what's motivating them either for the short term or the long term?
Well, that's a great question. I think there's three things. The first I hinted at, which is the theater aspect, the communications with the public. What is it that they did when they went out to Washington DC? Well, they pled, they begged, for example, Vice President Kamala Harris and others to pass the federal legislation, both HR1 and HR4, that would largely overturn state election laws in all 50 states, including, for example, Texas's voter ID law. It would allow people to register to vote simply by affirming that they are eligible to vote, no citizenship check, no photo ID. It would in fact prohibit the request or requirement for photo IDs. And what's interesting about this is, of course, in Texas, polling that we've done at the foundation and polling by others, show that requiring a photo ID to vote is wildly popular, both among Republicans and Democrats and independents, all racial and ethnic groups, just think it's a common sense thing. And so what was fascinating, I believe it was Congressman Chip Roy, who used to work here at the foundation, asked the question, you know, do you or do you not oppose the request or requirement to present ID to vote? And it was interesting to hear the Democrats hemming and hawing when he asked them that question, because they know, they see the same opinion polls that we do, but it's very popular back home. And yet, even though they say one thing here, or maybe don't say anything at all in Texas, back in Washington DC, they were begging the Democrats in the House and the Senate to pass federal legislation to essentially outlaw any photo ID. So that's one political aspect. The two other things on the practical timeline question. First of all, this is a redistricting year. And if the legislature fails to deal with redistricting, because for example, the House can't get a quorum, then it's my understanding, under Texas law, that the task falls to the Legislative Redistricting Board, which is a five-member board composed of statewide elected officials, all of whom are Republican. And so the problem with that, if you're a Democrat, is that you may think you have a safe district, and maybe after the Legislative Redistricting Board is done, you no longer have a safe district. Or maybe you find yourself in the same urban district with three of your colleagues, and three of the four are going to have to move to a new house or run against each other. And it's really not a pleasant thing for them to think about. The third and more troubling aspect is the fact that we had a bail reform bill that was very needed, that was set to be passed in the closing hours of the regular session. And when they busted quorum the first time with a day to go in the regular session, they left that undone. And then when they left it undone again in the first special session, what happened was they blew a deadline to get the needed constitutional amendment on the ballot for November 2021. And now the earliest that bail reform can be voted on by the people to change the constitution is May 2022. Now, why is that six-month delay important? Well, unfortunately, seven Texans so far have been murdered because of personal recognizance bonds that have been issued by judges, mostly in Harris County, but a couple people were murdered in other counties as well, that would have been fixed had this legislation been passed. And so the sad thing is, that six-month delay, if you look at the current pace of individuals being murdered because violent, dangerous individuals are being let out by liberal judges, we're looking, Kevin, at potentially 21 Texans losing their lives over that six-month delay because the Democrats busted quorum to play to their audience and for political theater.
And so given the consequences of their absences, that leaves a lot of people in Texas and beyond asking the question, what legally can be done to bring them here? We're hearing, even as we sit here in the middle of the second special session, that any day, if not any hour, there will be a quorum in the House. And I think our audience members know that as soon as that quorum happens and business resumes in the House, that within days we'll have hearings on the bill, and within weeks we'll have a bill and ultimately a law. So we're very optimistic about the outcome. What's frustrating is what happens in between. And so, Rob, that leads me to this question, which is a common sense question about common sense situation. And that is, you've got 50-some members of the Texas House who are being paid their per diems. They're back in Texas, we think. The Speaker of the House has signed civil arrest warrants for them, and the Texas Supreme Court has spoken about this in the last 24 hours. Given your approach as an attorney and one with great experience on this, what's going to happen? How are we going to get these folks, or enough of these folks, back into the House chamber so it can conduct its business?
So there's two developments. There are going to be game changers on riding the ship, getting a quorum back in the Texas Legislature so that the Legislature can meet and conduct business. One huge development happened yesterday. Another one is coming up that I expect here in the next week. Let me explain both real quick. First of all, under the Texas Constitution, the Texas Constitution gives the House and the Senate the power to compel the attendance of its members in order to have a quorum. Quorum is you have to have two-thirds of your members present in order to conduct business. And under the rules that the House adopted at the beginning of this year, at the beginning of the special session, the members all voted and agreed that compelling attendance could involve arresting members who refused to show up. And so when the Democrats broke quorum and ran away to Washington DC, or Portugal, or Colorado, or the number of places that they have been over the last 30 days, before they came back, they filed a lawsuit, several lawsuits, getting friendly judges to enter injunction orders prohibiting the Speaker of the House from being able to exercise on the power that he was given by the members to compel attendance. And their argument was basically that compel just meant like persuade, you know, that the Speaker of the House could just ask really nicely, but that that was the extent of the power under the meaning of the word compel in the Texas Constitution. And yesterday, Justice Jimmy Blacklock wrote a fastball down the middle, strikes an opinion by unanimous Supreme Court, where he struck down these injunctions that were entered against the Speaker of the House and said, no, compel means compel. The House has given, the Constitution gives the Speaker of the House the power to go and to use the means that are necessary to bring these members to the legislative chamber in order for there to be the conducting of business. So the Supreme Court has spoken, we can expect the Speaker of the House to exercise on the power that unfortunately he's been forced to take advantage of in order to discharge his duties. At the same time, what I'm also watching for real quick is Representative James White has asked for an Attorney General opinion on the issue about declaring legislative seats vacant when you have a member that refuses to show up. So he's asked the Attorney General for an opinion as to at what point in time, when a member doesn't come to the Capitol and won't do their job, does that then give cause for the governor to be able to declare that seat vacant, which would then trigger a special election for, to elect a new person who would do the job of that office? So the Democrats are really between a rock and a hard place. Now it's been affirmed that the Speaker of the House has the power to physically compel them to Austin to participate in the legislature during the special sessions, and it is looming that the Attorney General is going to affirm the power of the governor to declare the seats vacant for all the members who continue to refuse their job, to do their job and come to Austin, which would then kick them out of office and require there to be a new special election for, to elect a new member. So both of those are happening in real time, but I think are going to change the playing field and allow the legislature to get the business done for the people of the state of Texas.
Well, that's just right. I mean, I think that, I'll reference some polling that we have some access to in a moment, but sort of higher level view is just common sense, that no matter where a viewer of this livestream might be watching from, whatever business they're in, they would find it unconscionable that one of their colleagues is being paid to be at work and their desk is empty, their office is empty. It's just, it's not only un-American, it's sort of not even human. This is not how virtuous people operate. And so it's not a surprise to make a quick comment about public polling and some private polling that we have seen, that in almost all of these districts held by runaway Democrats, that these members are totally upside down. And we'll leave the campaigns and elections to other organizations that do that, but as a research organization, we can tell you what the research shows. And the research shows that it is going to be the exact opposite of a blue wave, shall we say, next year, for this reason. Constituents, whether they're Republicans or Democrats or independents, expect their elected representatives to be present and represent them. And I think that that has really raised the stakes for those members who run away. All of that, Chuck, to ask you a question from the audience, and it's a good one. This audience member asks, do you think that this stunt by the Texas House Democrats has paid off of them? Has there been any benefit to them that you've been able to discern?
That's an interesting question. I would say that from a political standpoint, the more left-wing members of the Democratic Caucus who represent typically urban core areas, see this as a net positive. Think of them as the Alexandria Ocasio-Cortez caucus within the Texas House Democrats. They are a minority. However, they are the ones exercising a considerable amount of kind of ideological pressure on their colleagues, using social media, using access to donors to try to, you know, hold their colleagues in line on this boycott, on this walkout. And so I don't believe that they will be under electoral threat. However, as I mentioned earlier, the issue of redistricting could touch them. They may find themselves packed into districts on top of each other, where they're going to have to make a determination that some of them are going to have to move to a new area in order to run for office. So I think that's a lot of what's driving it. It's the hardcore, left-wing portion of the House Democratic Caucus. On a negative side for them, I think it made further drive the alienation of the Democrats that represent the Rio Grande Valley. We already saw a significant electoral shift toward Republicans in the 2020 election compared to 2016, where several, in fact, all of the counties along the Rio Grande River shifted to one degree or another over to the Republican side. And this process, I think, will be accelerating because it's an open secret in Austin that I don't believe any of the representatives from the Rio Grande Valley have participated in this walkout. So there could be some long-term negative ramifications for the Texas Democratic Party when it comes to this walkout. So much is to say, though, that those more left-wing progressive members from the urban areas are likely not going to see much in the way of a negative effect for themselves.
Okay, thanks for that, Chuck. Rob, I'm going to pitch the next audience question to you. It's framed as being about activist judges. It's a great question. I'm going to modify it just a little bit so that we get as, pick your brain as much as we can. This audience member is curious about the possible outcome of all of the potential litigation or litigation that's already been filed, and wondering if, whether with Texas lawsuits or perhaps lawsuits in Georgia, Arizona, places where election bills have been passed, that we'll be able to have enough certainty about election integrity that the next election cycle in 2022, from your vantage point as an attorney, will be fair and honest?
Well, and that's, I think, a concern that's there, is not necessarily that we will lose these cases. We were very successful last year in defeating this, the avalanche of litigation from the left, but it caused chaos. It caused chaos where you had these progressive activist groups coming in in the middle of voting, filing lawsuits, trying to change the law, or going to a sympathetic local judge and getting an injunction that takes three or four days to overturn. And so there's uncertainty as to how the rules are going to work in the middle of that period of time, which just disrupts the electoral process. So there is the risk there that, you know, the efforts of the left are, really, they don't expect to win, but they're just trying to gum up the works and make the process as cumbersome and painful as possible in an attempt to justify intervention by the federal government to come in and take over state election law. But at least with the cases filed this year, we have the time, the Texas Public Policy Foundation with the litigation team that I lead and working in partnership with other groups and state agencies, to defeat these cases, to litigate them quickly, to get them struck down, hopefully to get them all resolved before the primary season, certainly in advance of the general election. Because, look, we've seen the damage that can be done by these lawsuits. You look at the consent decree that came out of Georgia, that completely changed how elections were operated in that state in 2020. You look at all of the conflict that happened here in Texas. It's not the way that the system is designed to work. We need to have judges who, regardless of their partisan affiliation, stick to their oath to uphold and defend the law. But while there's forum shopping and, you know, the efforts by some judges to be more partisan activists than jurists, then we're going to be right there, fighting these cases, litigating them quickly, and defeating them so that we can have the same set of rules, of rules passed by the Texas Legislature, apply for all voting locations in Texas, for all elections, for all voters, so we can really have some trust and confidence in the outcome of our elections.
Yeah, that's good to hear, some perhaps cautious optimism, I might summarize. Chuck, I'll ask you one final question from the audience, and this is kind of a practical question, perhaps timely, as soon as we get a quorum in the Texas House. This audience member asks, it can feel very hopeless for Texans to watch the House Democrats get away with this. Is there any way or anything the everyday average person can do to help?
Wow, yeah, that's a good question. I would just first act to encourage your representatives, you know, if it feels hopeless for the average person, many representatives, especially those trying to do the right thing, could use some encouragement. And I think that would be on both sides of the aisle. What happens in these circumstances is that our part-time legislature, that excluding the per diem they get during a session, is making 600 bucks a month, you know, for a lot, the greater part of them, they're not able to earn a living right now during these extended special sessions. So anything that you can do to encourage them, to hold them up, So anything that you can do to encourage them, to, to hold them up and to, you know, help them do the right thing, I think would be very important. The other thing is to offer solutions. So for example, I believe it's Representative Toth has a bill that would define in statute when a vacancy occurs due to someone not attending, you know, having essentially unexcused absences. And so that is a, a way of, of codifying, you know, to potentially prevent future runaway quorums because the, the problem that we have is it's constitutional, our two thirds requirement, we're one of only four states. It's two thirds and as a result, it requires a two thirds vote in the House and the Senate to be able to put it out to the people for a vote. And of course, that isn't probably likely to happen. So I would just encourage people watching not to lose heart. You know, I know that most members are working really hard on this and they're just as frustrated as their constituents. But don't forget, they're people too. And to the extent that you can be supportive and encourage them, I recommend that you do that because it's been a long summer for a lot of these representatives and senators.
Well, it has. And, and I think Chuck, there's a lot of experience in that comment. You were a member of the California Assembly, so you know that, you know that legislators are humans too, right? And it's, it's really important that we remember in, in spite of all the technology that we have, all the innovations in our lives, that the simplest thing we can do is to call your legislator, especially if he or she's been supportive of this legislation and give them an atta boy or an atta girl and, and tell them thank you because this is going to go on for a little while longer before, to use a good Texas football metaphor, we scored the touchdown. On that point, gentlemen, I'd always like to wrap up with some, some optimism, at least cautious optimism. And, and I want to ask you a slightly different version of, of the proverbial final question that I usually ask about why you're so optimistic about the future of America. And, and that modified question is this, Rob, we'll start with you. You can, you can hear it in the questions of these audience members. We can hear it from legislators and staff. You can see the strain on their faces, whether they are supportive of this legislation or whether they're one of the runaway members, just the tremendous strain. This country also is, is undergoing a lot of news cycles that are not fun to watch. In spite of all of that, why this morning did you wake up optimistic about what is ahead of us this calendar year? And perhaps more importantly, what's ahead of us for the next five or 10 years?
You know, where I found the optimism, Kevin, many times was, you know, in prayer this morning as I started the day, but on a personal note, taking my kids to meet their teacher with the beginning of the school year and looking at the enthusiasm of, of the children returning to school. You know, excited to learn the next generation of Texans that are there. And knowing that what we are doing is building a better future for them, that what we're fighting for in today's discussion is to make sure that we preserve the, the liberty that we enjoy, especially where we see examples across the world in Afghanistan and other places where, you know, you, you see oppression, you see violence, you see a lot of fear. I saw the hope this morning through my kids in what we can preserve and protect and build for them here in Texas. We're going to do so by making sure that we have elections that have integrity, that we have fair results, that are transparent, that are uniform, that are consistent, and that we're going to work to make sure that we have a better day so that when we get stuck in some of the, the partisanship and the ugliness of the back and forth, let's look at what this is about. Let's look about what the future holds, why we work so hard for what we do. And really where we see the, the payoff for that and, and the value at the end of the struggle.
Yeah, that's right. And it, it really does highlight the election reform because there's been some conversation by the other side that there, there are no more than several hundred cases of voter fraud. And the three of us sit back here and scratch our heads and say, just a single case of voter fraud robs another voter of his or her right to vote. You need to talk about your children. The reason we're fighting so hard for this common sense reform is because every election has to have as much integrity and fairness and transparency as possible. With that in mind, Chuck, how would you answer that final question?
Well, that's a, again, a good question. I'm thankful that almost 10 years ago, I and my family moved to Texas from Southern California. And as I've been privileged to work with the Texas Public Policy Foundation since then, what I've seen is a state that, you know, just like any other human institution, it certainly it's not perfect. But compared to California and compared to other states around the nation, the Texas system works. What I find is that representatives and senators on, on both sides of the aisle generally will listen to the public, they'll listen to reason and data and information. And we see a lot of reforms getting passed in Texas, whether it's reforms to take care of our property tax situation where taxes go up way too quickly year after year, or it's criminal justice reforms or education reforms, electoral integrity reforms. These are all things that, our part-time legislature really puts a lot of time and effort into understanding and into developing legislation and debating it and getting it before the governor's desk. And again, while we certainly don't see as a foundation a hundred percent success rate every session, what I'm encouraged by is that there's a general willingness to listen and a general direction toward more freedom and liberty and, and toward looking to how we can reasonably restrain government so that we can ensure more prosperity for Texans. And, and lastly, Kevin, this gives me great hope for the rest of the country because we do have a federal system in which states are not merely an afterthought. They were in fact, the building block that created our great nation. And so from that, from the fact that, that our form of government acknowledges that as individuals were created equally and that we've got these, these equal rights before our creator. And that's what our government exists for is to ensure that that is implemented. And so as I see Texas struggling with these ideas and generally working in the right direction, whether it's in two or four or six years, I think that that gives me hope not only for Texas, but for the rest of the country, for the other 49 states and for the federal government, that if we're doing it more or less right here in Texas, then let's make sure that that success story gets out and gets replicated around the country. I think we have the ability to renew ourselves and as disappointed as I am with the way things are going right now in the nation, I'm as equally optimistic that Texas might lead the way out of the darkness that we're in right now.
Sure. I think that's well said. It's, you know, as a legislator, that the process can be messy. In fact, sometimes the process can become very tense. I, I know that that'll be the situation in the coming days as some of these runaway members of the Texas legislature return. There will be some medicine for them to consume politically. That's the risk of stepping away from your jobs, but that's also part of the process. Ultimately, we're going to get good bills passed, not just an election reform, but property tax reform and other issues. Well, Chuck DeRore, Rob Hindicki, great job. Thanks for joining me today. Most importantly, those of you in the audience who have tuned in, thanks for making our work possible. Next week, we'll be back with another topic, no doubt the timely issue of the week. Thank you. May the Lord